Today is August 23rd, 2022. The time is now 5:30 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I see that we do have a quorum present this evening. We will ask Councilman Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we are here this day asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Allow us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our communities. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, the environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Continue to remind us that all we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in service to humanity in Georgetown County and South Carolina. Our prayers for peace and brotherhood in America. Our prayers for peace and brotherhood worldwide. We ask for all these things in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. And thank you all for attending this evening. We move down to the approval of our agenda. There's a recommendation to move Report 15A Nonprofit Spotlight and Report 15B, the Employee of the Quarter recognition forward on the agenda. There's also a request to defer action out of 980 Retirement Proclamation. With that being said, is there a motion for approval of the agenda with the noted changes?
To move.
The move by Councilman Newton is there second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. With that being stated, we will move on down to item 15A, Nonprofit Spotlight. Helping Hands, Mr. Brendan Barber.
Well, thank you, Councilman Chairman Moran, also council members. We really appreciate you moving us up on that agenda. Of course, I would like to stay with the entire meeting. I would also like to thank you for the invite. Today, we have with us our Board Chair, Mr. Dick Rose, and also Kevin McCray from the Benel Foundation. And I believe one of the board directors, Mr. Ray Fuddy, is also here from Benel. Today, we would like to just put the spotlight on Helping Hands. And before we go into one of our featured programs, I'd just like to give you an overall summary of what Helping Hands is about here in the Georgetown County community. Before you, you have one of our packets. It includes our Community Impact Statement for 2021. It features our Youth Empowerment Program, which for 2021, we served over 80-plus students in all four of our high schools. We're not an after-school program. We're actually in the high schools, but I'll get into that further when we go through the slide presentation. Our dental clinic in 2021, we had over 533 patients that we served. We now, we do not refer them as patients. The key word now is those are our neighbors that we're serving. The dental clinic started in 2013. Our partners in the dental clinic includes Tylenol Health, St. James Health and Wellness, Delta Dental, along with some of our key donors. We also have our Compassionate Care Program, which we serve over 1,198 households for 2021. And when we look at propane and kerosene use, that was over 111 households that we served, along with 791 households for utilities assistance. Our Employment Skills Training Program, over the past year, that led to over 21 of our neighbors being employed. Our Employment Skills Training Program takes place within a week, and it's an extensive program that helps with soft skills, resume building, etiquette and dress, and how to perform during an interview. Helping Hands actually started over 30-plus years ago, just as a food pantry from one of our local churches, Presbyterian. It has grown now to be impactful through our entire county. We impact every region of our county. We serve all of our neighbors, and as our neighbors who are in need, we tell them that, hey, we want to help you break that cycle of poverty. And that's what it's all about. When you look at the Youth Empowerment Program, it started with John Bush and also the late Dr. Celeste Pringle. Our first high school was Georgetown High School. From there, we went to Andrews High School, Waukesha High, and Carvis Bay. If you may, you say, well, what is yet? Youth Empowerment Program is targeted towards high school sophomores, juniors, seniors. And what we're here to do with our high school students, we want to build that level of confidence. We want them to be able to take a risk, that they can come out, and when they get out of high school after their senior year, they have that confidence that they can conquer anything that's before them. What exactly do we do? We help with financial aid assistance. We help with college application. We guide our students on their path of the career that they're passionate about. We also help them guide, we have three areas where we guide them. That's college. When we talk about college, we're talking about technical schools, also the four-year schools, the military, and also our workforce. We also provide a comprehensive approach to our students, and we deal with their mental health, physical, emotional, and spiritual. Now, during the pandemic, during the peak, we never stopped serving our students in our high schools. When our high schools went virtual, we went virtual. And we understood that the academic structure during the pandemic was broken down into different sections depending on the high school. So we worked with our students in the morning, afternoon, and the evenings, and also our parents, because they were going through a lot of mental stress. We have an assessment tool that the entire state of Georgia is using at this time. Greenville County School District and Helping Hands at this time is the administrator for Youth Science. You say, well, what is Youth Science? Youth Science is an evidence-based tool where we can measure a kid's interest and also their skill level. And we can use Youth Science in our high schools with our school counselors, administrators, and the career coaches at the high school level. What's great about it, those of you who are not familiar with the educational process, every student in Georgetown County School District has to have an individual graduation plan. Youth Science goes along with that individual graduation plan. And here's the other thing. We talk about students who are inclusive. Our students who are in our special ed programs, special services programs, who have to have individual education plans, Youth Science plays a role in that to help the psychologists, the special ed teachers, and the administrators help our students to become successful. Breaking the cycle of poverty. Well, you know, a lot of times, it's not about getting every answer right, it is figuring out how to move on to the next question or the next situation where you have to provide a solution. So these are some of the things that we do with our students to let them know that anything's achievable, that if you come from Georgetown, anything good could happen for you. Now, some of the highlights, our graduating rate is 100%. If you're in our Youth Empowerment Program, by the time you get to your senior year, it's 100% guaranteed that you're going to be successful. We have an annual trip where we take our kids to the Florida Everglades. Now, one of the hurdles is that our parents, along with our students, they're always afraid of going outside of the comfort zone. So when you go to the Florida Everglades, you leave everything behind. You go to base camp, every form of technology and communication is left at base camp. For six days, you, along with your fellow students from the Georgetown County School District, that's all four high schools, you have to navigate the Florida Everglades. You go from island to island to island, setting up a camp every night, providing food, communicating with one another, and also at the same time realizing that there's nothing that you can't accomplish. Financial sessions on budgeting and investment, and also career opportunities with our local technical school, SC Works, and Mowing. Just two weeks ago, we took 34 kids to Mowing. So they got a chance to see how that 787 is being made out of carbon fiber, which is stripped only about maybe an inch and a half long, that they wrap it around this giant mold, then put it in the huge ovens to bake it, make our 747s. Can you imagine kids who have not been out in the neighborhood going to Mowing to see that? On top of that, this summer, and I was telling Kevin just a while ago, that during the summer, to have that type of participation, 34 kids going to Mowing, it speaks volumes. They also this summer went to the South Carolina Aquarium. They got to tour Charleston. They went ziplining, kayaking the Black River. You say, well, why are we doing all of that? Because kids need to understand, our children need to understand that they have opportunities. This is Stella Burcom. She's one of our mentors, and she's talking about budgeting, financing, and also creating your own opportunities within the community. If you can move the pictures, it actually speaks volumes. Here are our kids at the top, that top center picture, that's in the Florida Everglades at base camp, and we partner with North Carolina Outward Bound. Here, they went ziplining over in Alwindall. That was exciting. Cycling through Western County of Georgetown, that's kayaking on the Black River. And I think, what else? You have a couple others up there? And here is the escape room. If you have not experienced the escape room, take your family there, because you have to figure out all the clues to get out of there, and you only have an hour to do that. It's about teamwork. But parent our kids so that those of you in our communities that have businesses and you yourself are an employer, we have kids that are ready, once they come out of high school, to go to work. It's not about quantity, it's about quality, it's about changing lives and changing families. These are a few of our students, that's Waukesha High School. You can just keep on rolling, because my team put that together. Of course, we work with our junior ROTC programs, and it's just wonderful that we have an opportunity with your assistance through the organizations that you belong to, the businesses, and those of you that contribute to Helping Hands. We're able to provide these services not only to our young people, but to an entire family. When you talk about our dental clinic with our partners Tylenol Health, St. James Health and Wellness, along with Delta Dental, we've been able to reduce the backlog. When folks go to an ER, they have toothache, medical doctors can't help with that, they can only write a prescription for pain. But they can come to us Monday, I mean Thursdays through Fridays and receive state-of-the-art dental care. At this time, I'd like to open up any questions if you have any. The packets before you tells you about Helping Hands, and we're serving the entire family now at Helping Hands. Our Board Chair, Dick Rose, would you like to make a comment?
I think Brendan, you covered it very well. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. We're here to help Georgetown County, and we plan on giving them help.
Yes, sir. And in your package, you also have a save the date, October 9th. It's at the Reserve Harbor Marina, and we're celebrating our young people. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Are there any questions from council?
No questions but comments.
Walter, how many total children have you got in the program?
80-plus.
80-plus?
We have a waiting list, and we can't serve anymore because our staff is mental. You know, the more resources we can obtain, the more kids we can serve.
What's the spectrum, the age spectrum?
Well, if you're looking at sophomores, you're probably talking anywhere from 14 on to about 19, because we're serving sophomores, juniors, and seniors.
Mr. Barber, you finished, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Question, out of that 80, how many do you have that, and what is their perception of going to Ori Georgetown Tech?
Well, that's my thing. I have to give credit to our program coordinator, Mr. Ronald McInnis, and our Youth Empowerment Coaches, Mr. Tasha Smith, and also Genesis Wright. They want our kids to understand that there are choices out there, and that the opportunities in going to a technical school could be self-rewarding right away, because first of all, you don't have to worry about student debt. The next thing, you can make an income that's going to help you take care of your family, whether you're, you know, looking to be married, or whether you're looking to help the family in which you're coming from as a young person to help them get out of the cycle.
Is their reception of tech good? I think it's a much underutilized asset we have here in the county.
We have one of our students who's been in the program for three years. He's a senior this year, and he's dual enrolled. He's at Georgetown High and Ori Georgetown Tech, and he specializes in Megatronics. So we're making the push. The 17 students that graduated, and we celebrated this year, 16 got accepted to college, the other chose to go to military.
Thank you.
Mr. Barber, I'd like to commend you and your staff and the board for the work you're doing, and will continue to do.
It's my distinct pleasure to present to you, Mr. Kai Williams, our Employee of the Quarter. Would you like to make a comment?
To the members of family and friends, I am just so grateful and humbled to be chosen and, and I'm thankful. When Mr. Funny hired me for this job in my real funny voice, Kaiya, Kaiya, you can do it. I don't want no surprises, one call, that's all. And I think I got, I've gotten it right.
Uh, uh, along with our congratulations and, and hand clapping, Mr. Williams will also receive a plaque to commemorate his recognition and some well-deserved time off only. So, and Mr. Chairman, if you will, we'd like to get a photograph, um, for the official presentation of the award.
Nobody besides itself can do appropriations.
Congratulations again, Mr. Williams. I see Mr. Williams having his family with him. Um, can you get a shot of he and his family?
If you'd like to come back up, I'd be happy to.
Again, congratulations again, Mr. Williams. Thanks for the job well done and the job you continue to do. We move on down to our public comment. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to thirty minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. And please note that at the end of the three-minute period, a buzzer will go off and we ask you to properly conclude any statements you may be saying at that particular time. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comment?
Um, Mr. Chairman, we do have one speaker signed up tonight and she will have up to three minutes and that is Ms. Jennifer Hunt.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
How are y'all doing?
Doing well, thank you.
My name is Jennifer Hunt. I'm a resident of Andrews and I live on South Far. And, um, I'm here about a few things, but right now mainly, um, can y'all hear me? Um, the municipal building that is being, supposed to be being built is at a standstill and it's, uh, really ugly. And, uh, if you'll take a look at those pictures, I took those today in the rain and, um, I will do whatever I can do as a resident, but I need your help to allocate some type of money for the completion of this building. I understand it was with the penny sales tax. Maybe we can move some money from the Win Y'all Bay dredging, um, to that. But when people think of Andrews, they don't really think of a very pretty place right now. And if y'all could think of the families that live here, um, I'd really appreciate it, the families there would appreciate it. Trinity Christian Academy is there, Andrews Elementary, Middle and High. We've got Tony's Pizza and if you don't, we, we don't have, we need a lot of work. Our roads are really rough, our water keeps breaking. I can't tell you how many times I've not been able to take a shower, um, that night because the water breaks. And every time they have something fixed, the pressure changes and it breaks another part of the pipes. And I'm here, um, representing my little part where I live and I, I love where I live. I know I live right down from Mr. Newton. But if you could, when, when the ability comes to give money to Andrews in, in whatever way, somebody to help cut the grass, I don't know, fix the sidewalks, help with some of the, the abandoned buildings on the main streets, we could really do a lot. I will not be going anywhere. I'm on to, I'm on South Far. I can give you my contact information. I work in Andrews, I work at Petting House and I've been there, um, for eight years. Just think of Andrews, please. I, I appreciate all that y'all do. If, if you would, please help us out with the building, the water pipes, the roads.
We'll, we'll move down to the approval of minutes. The minutes for our regular council meeting on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, it has been distributed to each council member. Is there a motion pertaining to those minutes?
Still moved.
Okay, is a move for approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. You, you have a motion by Councilman Carolina for approval, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Minutes are approved. By virtue of the approval of our agenda, there are five matters included on the consent agenda, uh, which was approved by that particular process. Procurement number twenty-two dash zero-three, procurement number twenty-two dash, dash zero-three-five, contract number twenty dash zero-three-eight, dash DF, procurement number twenty-two dash zero-five-seven, and emergency procurement number twenty-two dash zero-six-five. We'll, we move to our public hearings. A public hearing regarding ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty. An ordinance to declare a surplus of tract of property owned by Georgetown County and located on Front Street in the city of Georgetown and to authorize the county administrator to sell the property at such time as may be appropriate in a manner described within ordinance number twenty dash thirty-two, the Georgetown County Procurement Ordinance. Now open the floor for public comments regarding ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty. Does anyone wish to speak regarding it? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. We move down to public hearing on ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-four. An ordinance to declare a surplus of parcel totaling approximately one eighty-two point two acres of land located on eighteen nine hundred North Frazier Street in the Plannersville Johann community of Georgetown County, South Carolina, bearing Georgetown County TMS number zero-three dash zero-four-five-three dash zero-zero-three dash zero-one dash zero-zero, and to authorize the county administrator to sell the property in a manner described on ordinance number twenty dash thirty-two as amended. The floor is now open for public comments regarding ordinance number, uh, public hearing regarding ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-four. Hearing no comments, floor is now closed. That closes the public hearing period. Uh, we move on down to appointments of boards and commissions. Uh, the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission, we have a recommendation for Councilman Carolina.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chairman. This is for the, uh, reappointment of Tiffany Etheridge Pierce. She was initially, um, appointed to the board to replace the vacant term of a past member. She's done an outstanding job as a member of the, um, of the commission and, uh, I make a motion that we continue with her service and her reappointment to the Alcohol and Drug Commission.
You have a motion by Councilman Carolina for reappointment of Tiffany Etheridge Pierce to the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations Tiffany Etheridge Pierce. Councilman Newton?
Okay, I'm making a rec, recommendation for appointment to the board of, uh, drug and, uh, alcohol abuse commission to, uh, Ms. Becky Tilton, Reverend Becky Tilton and Andrews. She's been involved with, uh, drug and alcohol abuse and, uh, she's, works tirelessly in the Andrews community, uh, to helping the, uh, less fortunate and I think she'll be a asset to the commission.
And promotion by Councilman Newton for appointment of Becky Tilton to the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. And I want to make a recommendation to the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission, the appointment of Kathleen McGrogan. Uh, she's a master social worker and she has been involved with Georgetown County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission for many years. She's been a counselor and I thereby move to have Ms. Kathleen McGrogan appointed to the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman Moran and second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move down to the Forestry Board. There's a recommendation to nominate Brian Clark and Dave Watford for reappointment to the Forestry Board. Is there a motion for their nomination?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, make that move.
It's been moved by Councilman Anderson for their nomination. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to appointment to the Foster Care Review Board. There's a recommendation for the appointment of Donna Depezzo, that's D-E-P-Z-Z-O, Depezzo to the Foster Care Review Board. Is there a motion for her appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
It's moved by Councilman Anderson for the appointment of Donna Depezzo, Depezzo to the Foster Care Review Board. Hopefully I didn't mess her nail up too badly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? And motion carries. Congratulations to all the appointees to our boards and commissions for Georgetown We'll move down to resolutions and proclamations. Um, proclamation number twenty-two dash twenty-three to proclaim the week of September seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-two as Constitution Week in Georgetown County. again, it's proclamation number twenty-two dash twenty-three. I'll just read the proclamation and hopefully we can get a motion from, we get a motion from our council members.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that, uh, we, uh, we approve this proclamation.
Okay, let's just go ahead and read it first though. I think it's a pretty important proclamation because we're talking about Constitution Week and, and with everything that's going around within our society today, I think, I think the public really needs to hear it. Uh, proclamation, "Instead of South Carolina County of Georgetown, where is the Constitution of the United States of America signed on September seventeen, seventeen eighty-seven, enshrined a foundation of justice, equality, dignity, and fairness for all, and became the cornerstone of the world's oldest constitutional democracy? And whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention? And whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the anniversary of this magnificent document, which is the guardian and protector of our liberties and freedoms? And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week? Now therefore, be it proclaimed, Georgetown County Council does hereby proclaim the week of September seventeen through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, as Constitution Week in Georgetown County and does hereby ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals held by the framers of the Constitution by diligently protecting the freedoms and privileges it guarantees to us and in remembering that lost rights may never be regained. So shall it be in the meeting duly assembled the twenty-third day of August in the year of our law, two thousand and twenty-two." Now may I have a motion for the approval of proclamation number twenty-two dash twenty-three?
Mr. Chairman, let me try that again. I, I would proclaim that the week of September twenty-seventeen through the twenty-third in two thousand and twenty-two as Constitution Week in Georgetown County.
It's, it has been moved by Councilman Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-four, Attorney Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this resolution is for a, uh, economic development project between Georgetown County and Santee Electric. This is out at, uh, Santee Electric Cooperative. This is out at the Georgetown Business Center down towards Andrews. It is for a, uh, development of a, what would become a spec building. We currently have none out there, uh, and they are important to the economic development in Georgetown County, so we would ask that the, uh, council approve this proclamation.
You have heard it from Attorney Watson. Are there any questions, Mr. Attorney Watson?
Um, I have, I have one, uh, Mr. Chairman. The, um, even though we approved the resolution, Mr. Watson, the, there's still negotiations going on as to the final details of this?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding. I mean, I think we're probably ninety percent there, but I think, you know, some of the details are still being worked out. I'm getting a nod from Economic Development, that is correct.
Is there a motion regarding resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-four?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-four.
The motion by Councilman Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Goggins. Second by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We are down to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 22-20, Madam Administrator.
The ordinance before you is to declare surplus property for, um, that is located right on Front Street. We've had that building for some time. There certainly, we are not going to use it, um, for any purpose that we've identified. We are trying to surplus that property to, um, entertain future lease, purchase, sell of that property.
Any questions for Madam Administrator? Hearing none, is there a motion for approval of the ordinance number 22-20?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, did you...
Chairman, I move for adoption of ordinance number 22-23, reading.
We have a motion by Counselor Johnson for the adoption of ordinance number 22-23, reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Goggins, Carolina and Anderson. Is, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay. We move down to ordinance number 22-21, Ms. Richardson.
Good evening. Items 10B and 10C are involving the same parcels, so I'll go over those together. This is the rezoning of one parcel, 4.33 acres, from FA to MR10, and the parcel's located at 95 Mariscena Road off Penny Royal. The parcel is currently vacant, and there haven't been any changes to this request since third reading. The future land use map designates this property as low-density residential with industrial abutting the rear of the track, and a change to the future land use map is needed to facilitate the request. The Planning Commission held a public hearing in May and voted six to one in favor of the rezoning. They also voted six to one in favor of the change to the future land use map to medium density to facilitate the request.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson?
None.
Okay. Is there a motion for adoption of ordinance number 22-21?
Yes, I make a motion to move to amend the future land use for this parcel of land located at, um, corner of Mariscena and Penny Royal Road.
If a motion by Councilman Carolina, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Richardson, ordinance number 22-22.
Yes, sir, this is the rezoning for that same track.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Richardson? Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to rezone the subject property as listed in ordinance number 22-23.
You have a motion from Counselor, Councilman Carolina, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion?
22 instead of 23.
22-22.
Yeah. Ordinance 22.
22-22.
22.
Right, okay. So there's a motion for adoption of ordinance number 22-22. We have a motion by Councilman Carolina, we have a second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Okay. Motion carries. We will move down to ordinance number 22-23. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir, this is a rezoning request to rezone two parcels from 10,000 square foot residential or R10 to residential one acre, R1. These properties are located at 130 Seadust Trail and 105 Seadust Trail in Paulies Island. And there haven't been any changes to this item since second reading as well. The Georgetown County Future Land Use Map designates these parcels as low-density residential. The surrounding parcels are designated for low-density as well. Future Land Use Map supports the request. Change is not needed. We did receive over 70 letters of support to this request. No opposition. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval for the proposed rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Is, are there any questions for Ms. Richardson? Is there a motion for adoption of, for third reading adoption of ordinance number 22-23?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 22-23.
You have a motion for adoption from Councilman Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We move down to ordinance number 22-24. Is there a funny?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this evening we call you with ordinance number 22-24. An ordinance to declare a surplus of possible land totaling 183 acres located at 18900 North Fraser Street in the Johanna Community of Georgetown County. This property currently holds our existing recycling center and the fire substation at this location, and, um, we, uh, do not have an additional immediate need for this large tract of land, and, um, it has been determined that this property, a portion thereof, can be declared surplus and sold to the benefit of Georgetown County. We have received a proposal, have received the appraisal for the property, and today we are recommending that you, um, adopt the recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Funny?
I have, have one. Mr. Funny, what, what was the original purpose of, uh, for the county purchase in that land?
Yes, sir. The purchase preceded me, but I understand it was purchased to build a landfill facility.
Landfill?
Yes, sir.
Do we have, um, do we have some buyers lined up for that piece?
We have some interested parties. We have contacted the county concerning, as a result of our notices in the, in the, in the media.
And, and have we clear cut that land, or is it wooded, or?
We have, on, on certain occasion, harvested timber with this property, and currently it has areas that's wooded, that's growing back timber there as well.
Okay.
And we plant trees there as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Funny? Hearing none. Is there a motion for adoption of ordinance number 22-24?
Mr. Chairman, question. Is this not in your district?
It is.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Yes, I move that we approve ordinance number 22-24.
Motion by Councilman Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? We move down to third reading approval of ordinance number 22-25. Attorney Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is ordinance related to the restraining of animals, particularly tethering, as well as kennels, pens, and running lines, and under what circumstances animals, you know, may be restrained in those manners, and then also what care must be provided while they are restrained. No changes have been made since this came on to council on the second reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Attorney Watson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a, have one. How, once we approve this ordinance, how are we getting the information out to the residents that this affects? This does not include municipal, inside municipalities, just outside county. How are we going to get this information out so they can know if they're in violation of this ordinance or not?
Uh, Mr., well, first, you're correct. The city has adopted its own tethering ordinance, so this is just in the county. I, I'm not aware of anything in place right now that would publish this. I think it'd be like any other ordinance. So, you know, if there's some guidance that the council wants to give on publication of this or new, new regulations.
I think we need to do something versus writing somebody a ticket that didn't know, that doesn't follow county council and what we do up here. There's quite a few out there like that, be it through the newspaper, gab news.
Mr. Newton? We have the right person right here in the room.
Ms. Jackie?
Ms. Jackie.
Yes. Yes. We will be working with our public information officer. We will get this information out far and wide as, um, to publicize this information, to make the public aware what the rules are, what the regulations are. It is not so much about giving the ticket as it is about educating our citizens, and that's what we want to stress.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
And it's my understanding this ordinance becomes effective immediately upon third reading approval? So I think, I guess what we're looking at is when, I think, going on, like Mr. Councilman Newton is talking about, when it's going to be enforced, the enforcement period, so I guess there'd be some connection with the Sheriff Department or officials to enforcement officers to give them some indications of when to begin enforcing this particular ordinance, although it's effective on a certain date.
Most certainly. I think what's going to be important is for normally for these things, we would do a 30 to 45 day rollout of the information, um, quite a bit, quite a bit of publicity. So we certainly appreciate the discussion at council, but it also gives us the opportunity to continue to inform the public about what we want the goal to be with this particular ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Attorney Watson? Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 22-25?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do pass and approve ordinance number 22-25.
A motion by Councilman Goggins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Third reading approval of ordinance number 22-25. We will move down to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 22-26. Attorney Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, actually for a refinance of a prior existing, a previously existing bond. It's a historic relationship between International Paper and Georgetown County. Uh, International Paper has an opportunity to save interest on its current debt structure, and so they have asked that we approve a reissuance of the bond structure. Uh, I will note that, um, this is non-recourse to Georgetown County, uh, and Georgetown County is simply acting as a conduit for the debt financing. Thank you.
Any questions for Attorney Watson?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to reiterate that, uh, for the public, that, that, that this is not the county taking out a $7.6 million bond. We are assisting one of our businesses in the county through the process that will benefit them in doing this, and, uh, we're just, we're just, uh, a little cog in the, in this, but we're not obligated by any way of repaying a $7.6 million bond.
That is correct. If they default, it is non-recourse against Georgetown County.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Newton. Hearing that, is there a motion for second reading adoption of ordinance number 22-26?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 22-26.
Motion by Councilman Newton, is there a second?
My second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to first reading of ordinances. These ordinance would be read into the record. Ordinance number 22-27, to amend the future land use map for a 2,061 acre parcel located on Sante Light Road, further identified as TMS number 1-0442-026-07-00, from low-density residential to public slash semi-public. Ordinance number 22-28, to rezone an approximately 2,000, 061.4 acre tract located off of Sante Lights Road, identified as TMS number 01-0442-026-07-00, to add a solar energy facility floating district to the currently zoned forest agricultural tract, agricultural tract. Ordinance number 22-29, an amendment to the future land use map, 58 acres located in the 2200 block of Brownsbury Road, TMS number 02-1009-004-00-00, from low-density residential to public slash semi-public. And ordinance number 22-30, to rezone approximately 58 acres in the 2200 block of Brownsbury Road, identified as TMS number 02-1009-004-00-00, from the Coral Point Plan Development to limited industrial. We will move down to item 15C, the option termination agreement. Attorney Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this regards a piece of property out in the Penny Royal section or area, and by mutual agreement of the parties, being Georgetown County as well as the party that holds the option, uh, we are, uh, asking council to approve a termination of that agreement. Uh, a little bit of history, the agreement was originally, uh, an option and purchase agreement was made dated February 25, 2020. That was subsequently assigned September 9 of 2020, and then there was an amendment to the option and purchase agreement of March 23, 2021. Uh, so we'd ask for a motion that would, um, terminate each and all of those and any others that may flow from them. I could have just one moment. Was there one sign? I'm informed that, uh, something was recently signed, 2022. I have not seen that document, but I think it was simply another amendment to extend it. So the language of the motion would need to also say, uh, you know, any others related to this, um, so that we, but, uh, this, again, by mutual agreement of the party, so don't anticipate there'll be any pushback on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Watson. Any questions for Attorney Watson?
Yeah, I have one, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Watson, the, uh, the 80,000 that we're refunding, that was their money originally they put down with the county. We're just giving it back to them. Is that correct?
Correct. It's a total of two sums that was paid, one, I think, on the First Amendment or the First Option, and then later on a, when it was renewed. So that, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've just got a comment. My congratulations to the team that got this done. I know this was something that we, we definitely wanted to get done, and good job.
Thank you.
He's sitting in the back, back there.
I'm, I'm, I'm watching her smiling.
Okay. Okay, with that being said, um, I move to terminate the option and purchase agreement made between Georgetown County and GM Agent LLC dated February 25, 2020, and the assignment of option and purchase agreement dated September 9, 2020, and the First Amendment to Option and Purchase Agreement dated March 23, 2021, and any and all other amendments, assignments, and our options related there too, for property consisting of approximately 50 acres located in the Penny Royal area of Georgetown County and known as the Penny Royal Track as described in the option and purchase agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Is there any further business coming before council? Is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Councilman Goggins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Motion carries, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming out, and thank you.